So here's here, Rufus is here, Nicole's here, Julie's here dancer. We have a call.
Yes.
I'll talk slower. Brooke, happy birthday. How old are you now? You're twenty-seven?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? I have suits older than you. I do.
Good afternoon, welcome to this afternoon's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, October ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call is all present except Danielle. Minutes from last time.
I move to approve the September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, school board minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda, no changes.
I move to approve the October ninth, two thousand and eighteen, school board meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we will move to superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. First of all, let's look at the pink calendar that you have. We have a busy month. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October tenth, at four fifteen, the curriculum committee will be meeting at the Fairmont High School, will be meeting with Principals Ness and Tredo. That will be held at four fifteen, that will be held in the conference room at the high school. And that's Rufus, Nicole, and Dell. And also tomorrow night at eight o'clock is the school board candidate forum, and that will be held right here at City Hall. And that will be streamed live, and also people can call in questions. And we have, just to refresh everybody, there are four candidates signed up to run for three school board spots this year. Please take note that on Thursday, October eighteenth, that is MEA Conference Day, and we are canceling the policy committee meeting that was scheduled for that day. And also, the Southern Plains meeting has been canceled for Monday, October twenty-two. And then on Tuesday, October twenty-three, we have an operations committee meeting that will be held here at City Hall at four o'clock, and that will be held right before the next school board meeting. And then on Thursday, October twenty-four, there will be a school board lunch at the junior senior high school, and that's a date change from October twenty-five, that will be held in S two twelve, that's room right up next to Mr. Hurnus's room. All board members are invited to attend. And then on Monday, October twenty-ninth, is the teacher, new teacher recognition banquet, and we have a couple of faculty that are going to be celebrating their twenty-fifth.
Question.
Yes.
I have on my calendar that the twenty-fourth is a Wednesday. So is it Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, or Thursday, the twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fourth.
The board junior high lunch?
Has to be, it has to be.
That's a Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
So it's on Wednesday? Okay.
Okay, let's change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification, Wednesday, October twenty-fourth. And then the new teacher recognition banquet is at Interlock and Golf Course. That's at six o'clock on Monday, October twenty-ninth. And then the other three handouts, you have a handout of the student count, and right now we're serving, as of today, one thousand six hundred and fifty-four students, eight hundred and twenty-five at the elementary K through six, and eight hundred and twenty-nine at the high school, grade seven through twelve. And when you compare that to last year, September twenty-five, we were serving one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven, one thousand six, one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven, and now we're serving one thousand six hundred and fifty-four. And that's, we're down forty-three students. Now, when Sue Nelson and I did the budget projections this year, we budgeted for one thousand six hundred and twenty-five. We knew that our enrollment was going down a little bit, and the lower numbers are in the kindergarten, first, second, third grade, one-ten in kindergarten, ninety-six in first grade, one-hundred and sixteen in second grade, and one-oh-nine in third, and then it's one-twenty-one in fourth grade. And then the numbers get up to the one-thirties and one-forties, grades five through twelve. We still have very strong numbers, grades five, one-forty-two, grade six, one-thirty-one, grade seven, one-thirty-five, grade eight, one-forty-nine, grade nine, one-forty-two, grade ten, one-twenty-one. And that class, the great, the tenth grade class is the class that was born the year after nine-eleven, and that class is universally throughout the country, a little bit lower than other classes. Eleventh grade numbers are one-forty-two, and we have one-hundred and forty at the twelfth grade. We've had some migrant students that have already moved, relocated to the southern part of the country, and so they were with us for a few weeks, and now they're gone. The other two documents I have for the board's consideration tonight, we've put together an open enrollment in and out document, it's a one-pager, and it shows that we have one hundred and ninety-nine students that have opened enrolled into Fairmont area schools, and we have two hundred and eleven that have either opened enrolled out or have gone online. If you note that thirty students have gone online, and the other students have opened enrolled out. The, just to compare a few of the, of the big numbers here, we have sixty-three students from Grenada Huntley East Chain that open and roll in, we have sixty-four of our students that open and roll into Grenada Huntley East Chain, we have sixty students that have opened enrolled from Truman, but we have nineteen of our students that have opened enrolled to Truman. Martin County West, we have fifty-two of their students, and they have ninety-six of ours. Blue Earth, we have fifteen of their students, they have one of ours. It's interesting that we have eleven high school students from Blue Earth, we have four elementary students from Blue Earth. We also have two elementary students from Jackson, we have two high school students from Mankato, we have five students from Saint James. And this is pretty even, actually. Over the years, it's been a little more lopsided. Question?
When students enroll in online courses, do they come into the actual building and take those classes?
The ones that were, the ones that are listed here, these thirty students are students that are not in the building at all. That's different than the students that are in Mr. Erickson's, Eric Johnson's class that are doing online, but these are students that are not inside our building.
So they're taking their total curriculum outside of the building?
That's correct. And if you look at the very bottom there, Nicole, seven of those students are in placement, either for chemical or mental reasons. And five are in in-state, and two are out-of-state. And so, you know, the other one to look at here is Worthington Virtual. Worthington School District has, they've encouraged their faculty to start teaching online classes, and so they have a number of students, that's really a growing revenue stream for Worthington. You know, they have a tough time passing a bond issue, but they're doing pretty well in terms of enrollment numbers are up, and they have a number of people taking online classes. So they've encouraged their faculty to teach online classes to other students in the state, and they, they receive the money for that.
Do we know why these students are taking online courses?
We do not at this point, but that brings up a good research topic that, we did that a few years ago, we actually contacted every student that opened and rolled in and opened and rolled out, and we can also do the same thing for online to find out why. And remember, in Minnesota, it's unbelievable, but according to state statute, you can go online as early as kindergarten. If you're a student K through twelve, you can take online classes.
Do they just have to be certified in the state of Minnesota?
The online classes? These classes here, the top five classes are online classes that are certified in Minnesota. If you take an online class outside of the state, we do not, the funding does not follow the student. We found that out last year, remember? Okay, but if they take an online class from an, an online provider that's located in Minnesota and registered at the state, then the state aid follows that student. So we don't get the funding for that student, the money goes directly to Minnesota Virtual, Minnesota Connections, Blue Sky, Insight, and Worthington Virtual.
Do you know what it takes to become a virtual online teacher in the, in a district? Like, could some of our teachers do this?
I think some of our teachers could. I, you know what I'll do, I'm gonna be at a meeting tomorrow with the Worthington Superintendent, and I'll talk to John to find out what process they did to get certified. The, the district actually has to get certified, or the institution has to be certified, not so much the teacher, but the institution first, and then they can hire teachers to teach online classes.
Okay.
But I'll track that down, because that's a good thing. I think we have, we certainly have very talented faculty at the entire district, that that might be something that they may want to do for additional revenue.
Is it too quick to expect that we could talk about this tomorrow at the curriculum meeting?
It's possible, because I have a meeting tomorrow morning in Mankato with fifty other superintendents, and I'll certainly bring this up and see if I can bring that, I'll see what I can learn in a day. Okay? And then, I have one more document for you. The document that's labeled Minnesota West, Fairmont High School. I put on the back there also, so I just wanted to, just wanted to verify with the board and with the community that, I keep talking about the fact that we're a comprehensive, a comprehensive school district. You know, we have, you know, we teach math, we teach reading, we teach language arts, we teach science, we teach social studies, science, but in addition to that, we have a comprehensive school district in that we have a lot of vocational classes, but we also have a number of college classes. And this document here points out that right now we are teaching twenty separate college classes at the high school, and students, if they maximized every college class that we have available, they could earn seventy-one college credits at no charge. That's incredible. And the three new classes that we added this year, cadet teaching with Mrs. Tonder, that's a, that's a class that she's teaching for people that are interested in going into the, the teaching field, and you can take that class for a regular high school credit or college credit, and that's being credited through Minnesota State University, Mankato. Animal science is a college class that is offered by Ms. Seibert, and that's from the University of Minnesota, that's a four-credit class. And the college in the schools welding class is being taught by Mr. Bodine, and that's from Riverland Community College. That's a year-long class, that students can earn three college credits. So in addition to the seventeen college classes we had, last year we added three additional ones this year, for a total of twenty college classes and seventy-one college credits. So, you know, for people in the community to think sometimes, I, I get calls sometimes thinking that we're spending way too much time talking about vocational, or way too much time talking about the fine arts. But I want to point out that we have all three. We have fine arts, really strong fine arts programs, we have strong vocational programs, and we have strong college in the schools programs. That's what I define as a comprehensive school district.
I agree.
Any questions for me tonight?
Okay. Dan, donations?
Yes, we have several, so we'll begin with those. And it's, first is in appendix C. I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas DNS trophies donated clothing valued at seven hundred and forty dollars to Fairmont Elementary, youth-sized clothing was given to students in need, adult-sized clothing was sold to staff at a reduced price, and all that money will be used for student field trip scholarships. Be it resolved by Fairmont area school board to gratefully accept this gift.
Second.
We'll do roll call, Dell.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Dell. In appendix D, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Holly Hazard, a parent and member of the pet group, donated ten headphones for second grade of fifty-dollar value, be it resolved by Fairmont area school board to gratefully accept the gift.
I'll second it.
Roll call, Dell.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye. We have another in appendix E. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas the Martin County pork producers donated two hundred dollars in pork certificates to each Fairmont Elementary and Fairmont Junior Senior High School, be it resolved by Fairmont area school board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call, Dell.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye. And another in appendix F. I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Capstone Publishing donated fifty-five books to second grade at Fairmont Elementary, a value of five hundred and fifty dollars, be it resolved by the Fairmont area school board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call, Dell.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move to finances. Julie?
Yes, in your packet, you should have, let me get to mine, transfers wires for September twenty-second to October fourth. Nothing special in that, it's just the routine bills that we're paying. And then the checks, just a couple to bring to your attention. In Commerce Bank there at the beginning, a movie licensing USA. This is for the elementary license that gives the school district an ability to play movies from whatever source, but then the students can watch that, and there's not an extra charge for it. The high school license came separately, so there's a license for each building with that.
Are those specific movies?
Certain movies, yeah, that they...
These are mainly children's movies that are played during lunchtime?
To avoid copyright?
Right.
So when a teacher shows a movie in a classroom, that's covered by this?
Should be.
It is, but also it's, it's, most of these movies are done in the K-two cafeteria or the three-six cafeteria, actually, K-two cafeteria is what, where we use them mostly.
Well, in high school, then, two is also, right? And, because there is one for that, and that can be done at the PAC.
That's correct.
Okay.
And speaking of the PAC, Julie, you know, just an acknowledgement that, you know, we've been working with the contractors to develop the implementation plan to replace the seating at the Performing Arts Center this summer, and that's going to be paid for out of the long-term facility maintenance fund. And I did get a question on that just the other day, wondering if we're ever gonna replace that seating, and it is scheduled to be done the summer of two thousand and nineteen, and the orange seats will now become red.
Yay.
Yeah? Okay.
Good. Okay, another one. Check number sixty-one, seven, forty-three, Door Electric, there's some extra lighting projects, just to make your, just to bring aware that we're getting close to being finished with the lighting project. Another one, Gemini Studios, check number sixty-one, seven, forty-nine, that's just a monthly maintenance fee, and then the sports filming that we pay for. Minnesota West, check number sixty-one, seven, sixty-seven. This is for college in the schools that we pay for that, so we can provide those classes for our students. And I think that's it. Any questions on those?
Julie, just a comment on the Minnesota West bill, that thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars seems like a lot of money. However, if a, if one high school student goes full-time, post-secondary options, we lose ten thousand dollars for one student. And when you think about the seventeen college classes that were being, are being taught at our high school, by our high school faculty, every time that we do that, and we keep our students on campus, we may end up, we will end up paying sixty-five, sixty-six thousand dollars in the year, but that's, that means if we just save six students, and we know that we have classes that are twenty, twenty-five, thirty, that are taking classes at the college, so this is real cost avoidance. It's kind of like insulating your home.
So any other comments or questions? If not, then I would make a motion to approve the wire transfers for September twenty-second to October fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and payment of October ninth, two thousand and eighteen bills.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so...
Why don't we, can we check with, Jody, can we just check with you?
Oh, sir.
Okay, let's move ahead with the rest of the things.
Okay. Let's do resignations. Dell?
I would like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Bianca Nagel, a paraprofessional effective October fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Dan?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Secondly, I would like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Talia Fitzloff, a Title I aid effective October twelfth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And employment, Julie?
Yes, Principal Davison is being, is recommending that Christina Gonzalez be hired as a paraprofessional to replace Bianca Nagel. Christina has several years' experience working with people with disabilities at Core in Sherburne, and also has served one year as a pair with the Southern Plains. And so with that, I would make a motion to approve the employment of Christina Gonzalez to serve as a paraprofessional at Fairmont Elementary at a salary of Step Seven, effective October eighth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another?
And then the other, they're, these next two are kind of connected, but we'll do them separately. The recommendation is that we contract business manager services through school management services. That's began on October first through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Bradley Carlton will be the accountant serving us during this time. He's very familiar with our district, as he used to be employed by our, by Larson Allen, and so he has, very familiar with our auditors that way. And he's performed the audit for us. You'll see by the enclosed contract that Bradley will be working in our office. You'll see by the enclosed contract that Bradley will be working in our office one day a week in October, two days a week in November through June. And when he's not in the office, he'll be available at, through that time via email or questions or phone or whatever that needs to be provided. So I would make a motion to approve entering into an agreement with School Management Services for a period beginning October 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, for a fee of $60,000.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Part two?
Part two. And then there is a recommendation that Christopher Mulvich be hired as our district's business manager beginning April 1st, 2019. Christopher holds a bachelor's degree in corporate finance with a minor in business administration for Minnesota State University Mankato. He's originally from Cottage Grove, Minnesota. He's worked for the Albert Lee School District for two years, having served in the roles of Business Services Coordinator, Benefit Specialist, and District Accountant. Currently, he's employed at the Business Manager for the Hiawatha Valley Education District in Winona, and has served in that role for the past year and a half. And then he will also then, because Bradley Carlton, they're going to kind of overlap and bring Chris on board, and they'll be able to work together. They've worked together in the past, so they've got a good working relationship, and they will be working together from April to June. And then will be, that contract then will be up with Bradley, with SMS, and then we will have Chris then as our place, so. So I'll make a motion to approve the employment of Chris Mulvich as a Business Manager, an annual salary of $75,000 effective April 1st, 2019.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll do one more, and then we'll talk to Jody. Medical leave request, Nicole? You got that?
Sure. Tiffany Harris is requesting a medical leave from, on or about January 21st, 2019 through April 12th, 2019, per medical recommendation, and I move to approve that.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, Jody Christensen, report on curriculum instruction?
My task today is to report on the student achievement data from the school's last year's school. Jody, can you wait a second? I don't think your microphone's on. Try it now, maybe?
My task today is to report on the student achievement data from last year's fall-to-spring growth. And so you have a document, and I'm not going to repeat the things that are in the document necessarily, but I want you to realize that in that document, you have a printed version. If you had the online version, there would be links that you could drill down from the district level to the grade level, and you could look at a variety of things. So it might be worth your while to look at the online document and, and take a deeper dive into that SAAR report. Right now, I'm going to give you a bird's-eye view of the district information. And the goal of our assessment system really is threefold. We want to measure proficiency, and we use the MCA assessment to do that. That tells us how many students are mastering Minnesota standards. We want to measure growth, how students at all level have progressed. We use both the MCA and FastBridge to do that. And finally, we want to measure curriculum effectiveness, and we use both of those assessments to determine which areas require attention in terms of alignment, because a strong curriculum really makes a very big difference in our assessment scores. One of the things that I want to note before we talk about the data is that whenever you use numbers, you have to make a comparison. You can't just pull a number out of a hat without its context. A number without its context is just meaningless. So, for instance, when we look at district proficiency, we also compare that to the state average and to other schools around us to really get a perspective of that number in context. So right here in front of us, you have the MCA scores compared to the state average. You see a green line and a blue line. The green line is the district over four years, and the blue line is the state. So, the first one on the left-hand side is math. While the state proficiency rate has decreased over the last four years by 3%, Fairmont Area Schools has increased by 4%, giving us a net comparison of 7% differential. So while the state is declining, Fairmont is increasing. In reading over those same four years, the state has decreased by 1%, so they've remained pretty steady, while Fairmont has increased by 8%. Now, I've reviewed these scores in context of many districts across the state, our neighbors and Twin City Schools, schools of our size around the state, and I have not found one that has had continuous growth over four years. I might find some that remain the same. Many are declining, because you, you would have to have that if the state average is declining. One I saw had a bump in last year's score, but I have not found any that have had four years of continuous growth. So that is something worth celebrating. This is our science score over time. While the science scores in the state of Minnesota has gone down by 2%, we have remained steady, and in comparison from the start of, based on four years ago to last year, we were up by 2%. So, science might be an area where we might want to look at the curriculum in terms of alignment, because that is not increasing at the same rate as math and reading. Another strength of our district is growth. And what you see here are two pie graphs. The one on the left side is our district growth, and the one on the right side is the state growth. And each of those colored pieces of the pie represent different rates of growth. So the darkest shade is low-growth students in our district. The green at the bottom of the pie is medium growth, and the light blue on the left-hand side is high growth. So if you compare our growth, you'll see that our district has a 25% low-growth rate as compared to the state of 29%. So we have fewer low-growing students. Likewise, 45 and 30% of our district meet medium to high growth, while the state has 44 and 26. So we exceed the state average in both of those areas. I again have compared this to neighboring districts and other larger school districts that have high reputations. I have found only one that can exceed our rates of growth. I found two that matched our rates of growth, but only one that exceeded. Now we're going to look at the proportion of our students in each of the categories compared to the state. So you'll see math, reading, and science in a stacked column. The first column on the left in each of those areas is the state, and the second column is Fairmont. So the very bottom, the darkest color, is those students who did not meet standard. The green color is, would represent students that were partially meeting standard. The blue is those who met, and the gray is those who exceeded. So if you, if you needed kind of a context to understand, the top group might be students that reach an A. The blue would be students that would meet standard, which is considered a B. The green might be the C students. They met part of the standards. And then the darker color would be students that did not meet the standard, like Ds and Fs, in terms of grading criteria. So as you compare those chunks, you'll notice that our did-not-meet-standard is smaller in every instance compared to the state, while we have about the, the same in the partially-meets for most of them, and we have fewer in the exceeds category. But one of the things that, to note is that if you look at, and you can't really see that line, but you'll see that about over 80% of our students have partially or met standards as compared to under 80% for the state. So, you know, you can kind of see that line that's going across. We are always higher than the state in terms of how many of our students are meeting standards. We have the same comparison for our free and reduced lunch population. Again, you can see that the darkest color on the right-hand side in comparison to the state has a lower area, meaning that our free and reduced lunch population is doing better than the state's population. And you can even see that we have more exceeds in the math area than the state of Minnesota does for their free and reduced lunch population. I'm going to move to FastBridge, the next assessment now. So do you have any questions on the MCA results at a district level?
You know, on the state website, you, you can go to a place where it, it's like, I don't know what it's called, Rate My School or My School?
It's called the School Report Card.
Right, right. The, you know, they report met proficiency, or at proficiency. So how does that cor, how do, how do those numbers correlate with this data?
This is from there.
Okay, but, but, you know, like, science, you know, you know, for last year, science, it looked like we were down.
Well, this is, this is actually from that School Report Card. So if you compare individual pieces of it, like grade levels, there might be grade levels that are down, but this is the overall district.
Because on, on, on Fairmont School Report Card, I'm pretty sure science was 40% met proficiency.
Well, that would be for one of the grades, but not for the average of the district. This document here is from the School Report Card, and it is the district average, and that's what I'm showing you. There's, one of the grades is down, but two of the grades are not down. So the average overall is this picture.
So that was my question. So what, you know, what is, you know, on, on the School Report Card? It doesn't really clarify, you know, if it's a grade, it just, you know, it's your school, so...
Well, you can get it by grade level, and you can get it by district. The things that I'm showing you today are by district. And I, I assure you, see, it says 2018, it is our, it is our average.
Okay.
But you are correct, there was one of the three grades where science was tested that went significantly down, but then there was another one that went significantly up. So overall, the average then was a slight increase from last year as a district. But as an individual grade level, there, there was one grade level that declined, decreased.
Okay, so from, from the School Report Card, can, can you navigate to a deep dive into the...
You can get there by grade level.
Okay.
So all I'm showing you is the district averages tonight, but you certainly can go there by grade level.
So I guess my point is that if you just go to my School Report Card, it's confusing, because it looks like, you know, the numbers are different than what, you know, what we're, what we're hearing tonight. And it's, and that's the first thing you, you know, when, you know, if, if you don't know the system, and you just go to the School Report Card, and you punch into your school, that's what you see.
Yes, you can go by, there's three ways you can enter the School Report Card. You can enter it as a district level, you can enter it as a building level. So I'm showing you the district level. So if you go, imagine the School Report Card, and you start typing in Fairmont, you slide down to the bottom below all of the, the buildings, and you can enter as a district.
Okay.
That's what I'm showing you here tonight.
Okay.
The individual buildings may have gone down, because, for instance, in science, there's two, two grades in the high school and one grade at the elementary. So when you looked at the building averages, that may be different than what the district average is here.
Okay.
But I'm showing you the district perspective.
Okay.
If you look in the report, the printed report in front of you right now, you will see the grade level proficiency rates as well in the, I believe it would be in what Kayleen is going to be presenting. They have the summary of where the, each of the grade levels is at compared to the average for the state.
Okay, very good.
So this is the average, based off that School Report Card. This is coming, the, if you look at the pie graph, that's from the School Report Card. The stacked graphs are from the secure reports that, I'm not sure that they're available in the School Report Card, but they're given to the districts to analyze their curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Now we go to FastBridge, and FastBridge is a new assessment for us. We've had it now for the second year, and it's really coming out of a lot of work with the University of Minnesota professors. It has a high correlation to the Minnesota assessment. However, when you have a correlation, it's like two parallel lines. It doesn't necessarily mean that if you are at proficiency on the FastBridge, you will be at proficiency on the MCA. It just means that if you're high on the FastBridge, you're probably high on the MCA as well. And we have found that you have to have about the 65th percentile on the FastBridge to have a very high chance of passing the MCA test. So that's something that we really need to take a look at. One of the things that we have, we use the FastBridge for is to see who meets growth. And if you take a look at these graphs, the first one is the district overall growth in math, and this again has a color coding system. So the first color code is people that, students who did not make very good progress. The second one, they sort of made a little bit of progress. The third green one is those that met the recommended progress, and the blue was those that exceeded the recommended progress. And so overall, our district had an 82% meeting target in math, if you add up the green and the blue bars. And the elementary had 81, and the high school had 84% meeting their growth targets. And that's a very high number. In terms of the reading numbers, we have, overall, the district made 76% of our students met their growth target, 82 at the elementary and 69 at the high school. And so we have a little bit of growth perhaps to look at at the high school and investigate that area a bit. We did identify at our EIP, our summer retreat for the SDCC, two areas that really needed attention, and Kayleen will talk about those in the EIP in a bit. But one of the areas would be looking at 6th through 8th grade in all subjects. We noticed that when students began moving from class to class, their achievement level declines. And so we have a team of teachers investigating that this year. We also noted a, a drop from kindergarten to first grade. And that may be perhaps, this is just a theory, that the skills in first-grade reading and math did not get solidified enough, so when the summer break came on, we lost a lot of ground if students were not reading. And so one of the things that Joe and I had been talking about is looking at some summer programming to help keep those skills fresh and in a child's mind. So I guess my final word to you is that we do have a lot to celebrate. We have seen steady increases, which across the state is not common. Any questions overall? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So SDCC is meeting and kind of going over things that they think might help to improve this, and we as a curriculum committee, that's one of our goals too. Would it be possible to have, once a decision is made or consensus is, is met at the SDCC committee, to have them come and meet with the curriculum committee to make sure that you know that you have our support, and that we're all on the same page as to how we can help and improve these scores?
Certainly, and I believe, just to make sure I'm understanding, you're talking about that 6th through 8th grade transition subcommittee report? Is that what you're wanting, or overall the plan?
That and overall, just what the plan is, so that we are all on the same page and that you have the support as a dis, as teachers in, in this, because we, we all have the same goal, but if we're not meeting together, it, it won't happen, or it will be harder for it to happen. So if you can, when, once that's solidified on, on, in the SDCC, let us know, because we would like to meet.
Great, and in fact, Kayleen is going to be sharing those recommendations, and so this can be like a taste of that as we go through it.
Thank you.
Okay, but let's first approve...
Oh, want to approve it?
Yep.
Okay. I will move to approve this...
Okay. I will move to approve this 2017-18 student achievement report as presented.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
And Kayleen Schultz.
Hello. I am going to give you an overview of the educational improvement plan. You should have a paper copy. Starting out on page one, the main point that I want you to look at is the district goal. So SDCC meets in the summer for our retreat. We look at data that Jody presents and see areas of need to create our district goal. The approved goal for the district is by May 2019, student achievement of free and reduced subgroups will increase by 3% on the MCA assessment in reading and math. Our reasoning behind this goal is that the free and reduced lunch would be the targeted student group because there's a high overlap between those students and other subgroups, such as our English language learners and our special education students. Our thought is that working with this subgroup will increase a larger population of students because of that overlap. Once our goal is made, we create an action plan to meet that goal. We create two initiatives. The first initiative is at the bottom of page one, and that's aligning curriculum. We then decide what action steps are needed, a timeline, and leaders that will monitor this goal throughout the school year. So typically, our initiatives and our action plans are things that our teachers are doing through PLC, through site professional development, and through curriculum groups. Aligning our instruction to standards will help us reach our goal, and our initiative of aligning curriculum, aligning assessments, and following over to page two, using high-value instructional strategies. These are things that are offered through flexible professional development and are supported through PLC and our curriculum groups as well. Our PLC leaders and our site professional development team are some of those leaders that help with these action steps. On page three, we have our initiative, our second initiative, which is providing that academic, social, and emotional support.
I have no page two or three.
We're missing some pages.
We're missing page two and three.
Okay.
If, if we look really confused, that's why.
Okay.
Be thorough.
Okay, so this is linked on our website. So there is access electronically for that. I will try to explain this clearly, and then let me know if you have some questions. The second initiative is to provide academic, social, and emotional support to meet the needs of our diverse learners, which would then include that free and reduced population, special education, ELL, and then, like Jody mentioned, our transitions between sixth and eighth grade. And as Jody mentioned, we're seeing that our students that are leaving sixth grade and moving to the high school are having some decreases and some dips. And so our hope is to look at the structure of transitioning, what supports are in place in sixth grade that they're maybe not getting when they move to the high school, and what can we do to close that gap. Because we don't know, we have created a subgroup that, or a subcommittee, excuse me, that is going to look into that, look at some data, look at some problem areas, and then propose some solutions that we can then add in and start to hopefully make some, some corrections to that and see some progress. So with that, we created action steps, which would be determining effective instructional strategies for diverse learners, and that's through formative assessment. And that's ongoing. Every teacher is responsible for doing that, as well as our PLC leaders. And then we're providing flexible professional development for teachers to use those assessments and looking at that information. But also...
Is that a quick question?
Yep.
This may not be a fair question. If you don't know the answer, that's fine. But is this dip between sixth grade and then the seventh and eighth, is that new, or is that something we've seen in the past three years, or is it something we've seen for 10 years?
It has, it has occurred over time, and it actually begins in sixth grade.
Okay.
And then progresses to eighth grade. We often recoup that at eighth grade, and by the time they're assessed at the high school level, usually they're very strong. But they dip starting at sixth grade, and it has occurred for several years.
Okay, so it's not a new trend?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Our second action step in this initiative is to train teachers, paraprofessionals, and our title aides and support staff to meet the needs of our diverse learners. This is, again, ongoing. Now that our paraprofessionals are hired through the district, that provides more opportunity for the school to provide training, flexible professional development, and some guidance in supporting those learners. So that's something that we're looking at. And then the last one is studying that transition will, which will encompass those other action steps. And we have that subgroup. They will also be using the training, the instructional strategies, all of those pieces for our diverse learners when looking at supporting that transition group of students. Any questions on the initiatives or the goal? Okay. You don't have page three, is that correct?
That's correct.
At the bottom of page three is the professional development site goals. So there's one for the elementary, and their goal, which they create based on our district goal, is by May of 2019, the number of students at Fairmont Elementary School that met their growth targets will increase by 3% in reading and math FastBridge assessments. The high school site goal is by May of 2019, 62.6% of students receiving free and reduced lunch at Fairmont Junior/Senior High School will meet their growth goal from fall to spring on the A-reading FastBridge assessment. Then our PLCs create their goals, and our teachers create their goals based on these site professional development goals. Going on to page four, then, shows our needs and our growth goals for reading. And then page five shows the same for mathematics and science. At the back on page nine, there is a graphic organizer showing SDCC and what it encompasses as far as our data and our professional development, our staff development. And on the back, which you would have access online, on page 10, are links to the resources that you would need for some of this data and assessment information.
A lot of work, a lot of work went into this.
We meet for a full day in August and then bring pieces that need finalized in September and October.
Okay.
I think Nicole has a pretty good connection there, too, that the SDCC initiative should meet with the curriculum because they are all working towards the same thing. So the communication should be open.
Absolutely.
And maybe even scheduled more than just at the beginning of a year.
What would be the best way to create that connection for a contact person?
At the first curriculum meeting that we meet with, I think we should probably figure something out between both groups.
Okay. I will make arrangements for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, we need another motion?
I'll do that. Where's my thing? I move to approve the 2018-19 educational improvement plan as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're to committee reports.
I wasn't at SDCC.
Yep. Staff welfare?
Staff welfare, okay. A lot of it has been covered already through the meeting, and we did do a lot of different things. But I'll just touch on, like, the business management replacement. Initially, we should say Sue Nelson was greatly appreciated, and she will be sorely missed. But we do have a good team with Brad and Chris, and Julie covered that pretty thoroughly. But I do want to convey that this is going to be saving our district $21,000 this year. We tried to pragmatically approach the best service we could get, and Joe always likes to work with, within the budget. So we were able to save $21,000 this year, and that bears noting. The district is sponsoring a bus to the MEA conference on October 18th. And throughout all of Jody, the other, the other presentations tonight, you can see how important it is to have teachers that are taking what is needed and bringing forth what they know is needed so that we can give the best education that we can possibly give. So we, as a board, want to encourage all teachers to go to that conference, and we are providing a bus, a coach bus, I think, or...
Yes.
A coach bus for all the teachers that want to do that. And again, we really want to articulate that we would encourage the teachers to go to their professional conference and glean information from, from them. Next, we talked about the admission to our activities, school activities, to include parochial students so that they are able to come and enjoy the events for free. That was approved. PTO absences, to date, for special education paraprofessionals. Superintendent Brown, Brown, he's shared with us that so far, there are totally 33 absences, 17 of which did not require a substitute, 13 were full-day absences. Next, we talked about what's coming up, 2019 and 2020. We're looking at different options for the re- the principals through three through six. A lot of different things are happening there. We have to see what we're presented with ultimately. And then, this really ties in well with what the two presentations were tonight. Kristen Walters, a first-grade teacher, extended a proposal, and we, we accepted that and funded it for an IXL Action Research Project. This is for the elementary students that are attending reading and math and English language learning interventions. It was very successful last year. We're going to do it again this next year. And we would also say that as a board, this type of initiative and her willingness to, to go the extra mile, we'll fund stuff like that as best we possibly can. The kids need it. It's a great idea, and we fully support it. We had some other things that we talked about, but...
So she's doing it as a research project?
Right.
So can we see the results?
Sure.
Okay.
Right, and we actually have results from last year.
We have last year's, and it was very, it was very positive.
Should we survey nine students that are, that are designated as ELL, English Language Learner students? And they're not all from our class. I think six of them are and three of them aren't, or maybe it's the other way around. But I want to clarify one thing, because I was with some board members this morning for breakfast. When we talked about free admission, the, the intent of the school board is that all students will have free admission. And I even asked even the Blue Earth students, and they said yes. And so all students, regardless of what school they're, whether they live in our community or not, public, parochial, or anybody from any other district that comes in. And I did get a phone call today to clarify this. And so Thursday's volleyball game is at home, and will allow all students to get into that event free. And Wednesday's football game prior to MEA, October 17th, once again, all students will get in free. And then, of course, the fall sports, or the winter sports that will take effect, too. Also, I made an error that we do not charge for the high school musical for students to attend, and they will also get in free for the musical.
Okay, clarification, all students, free admittance with or without school ID?
They don't have to have school ID. If, if we can identify that they're a student, then that's fine.
We were, I thought we had decided that we were admitting all students.
Yes.
So, I mean, so, yes. We're not making a...
That is a celebration.
It is. Well, I think, in all honesty, I think we're going to be the first district. We might be the first district in the country.
The only thing is, is the Minnesota State High School League rules from here with the region, you know, playoffs. We, we do need to charge for that because those gate receipts do not, you know, those are passed on. So we have to, for, for just the playoff games and that. So at every sport, we will have to collect that. But otherwise, all the regular season games, all students will be able to attend.
For free.
And Minnesota State High School League has been that way forever. And that is, the money from those events goes to their operating expense for the entire season. But that's why adults do, are not able to use passes that are purchased there. So everybody has to pay when it comes to the section tournaments.
And anyone in the audience that might be concerned about lost revenue, not charging students, we're confident that this will boost concession purchases.
Well, historically, it has.
It has in the past, yes.
And it will also make those lines go faster.
Which, when the concession, the concession sales actually come back to the school, anyway, through the booster clubs.
Booster club. So then it, then again, that in turn buys more items for our students, so.
It's what makes the economy go, right?
The circle, circle of life.
It's a circle of greatness.
There's a question.
Okay, question?
How will this information be presented to others in the community so that they're aware of this opportunity?
Well, we have one of the best newspaper writers right here, who has a birthday tonight. And I'm convinced this could be, this might be the headline of the Sentinel tomorrow. It certainly should be in the front paragraph, because I think it is the story. I mean, the more I thought about this, I'm not aware of any other school anywhere in the country that is making this available.
Could you also send out an autodiler to our fans?
You're asking if we would send out an autodiler? Yes, that's a great idea. I will make sure that gets done. Judy will make sure I do that. We'll send out an autodiler before Thursday's volleyball game and before next Wednesday's football game. And I think we'll make some signs, too. We'll just put some signs up, too, that we'll post at both entrances, that Fairmont welcomes all students at no charge.
Well, yeah, I think if, if those who are taking the tickets are aware of it, yes, they'll, it'll be enforced there.
For what it's worth, we've talked more tonight than we did about it the other night, simply because we really thought it was a no-brainer. We want kids coming to the school activities, enjoying that from little to large. We, we want that, and...
We want them supporting our teams.
Yeah, so, that was a pretty quick, pretty quick section of our meeting.
Yep. Okay, one more committee report, or something to that nature. This is the board's breakfast with high school students took place this morning. Julie, any thoughts? Nicole?
Just that we, one, I appreciate students coming to talk to us, but also that we, as a district, need to make sure that we're very proactive in making sure that our students are aware of the opportunities that are available to them. That we, some, sometimes we might remember it one year, and then another year, forget that we need to remember it again. And so I, I thought that was very good.
And we did bring up the admissions to the games this morning to the students. We just had a few selected students that came.
We didn't select them.
But you know what I mean, though? I mean, we didn't have, you know, we don't...
There weren't long lines.
We don't go out, I mean, tried to reach out to them, but we even had donuts this morning. Rufus was gracious enough to bring donuts. So we'll try something else next time or that. But we really want students to come to us and tell us what, what their needs or their wants are. We, we aren't in the buildings, and so we don't see those things. And so it's really important that the students can come to us, and, and we will listen. Can't agree with everything, but we'll, we'll at least listen and, and bring it forth for discussion for our meetings.
Excuse me. From my time on the board, I've learned that it's incredibly important to talk to students, because students will tell you things that you don't see in test, test results, you don't get from administration, you get the, the real deal. And, and so we are working hard to make sure that, you know, our students, you know, feel free to come to us and, and tell us how things are going. We want, we are, they're our customer, and we want them to know that, and we want to know, them to know that they, that we appreciate them, and that, you know, we will make every effort to improve the educational experience that, that they get in Fairmont, you know, to our best ability. So it's, and we will continue working at it. It's slim pickings. We only get a few students at a time, but we always learn something important.
Absolutely.
So anything else, board? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Still move?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.